I'd like to call Madison Public Schools Board of Education meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Right. So our second agenda item is our school community session with which offers public participation. If we have anybody then Emily will share the rules of engagement.
So the board welcomes public comment at our meetings, whether you're in person or online. We ask that you just state your name and address and we do limit comments to three minutes. Do we have anyone in person who would like to speak? Anyone online? If we do not, okay, thank you.
Absolutely. All right, so next up we have our Board of Education Student Representatives Report with Brooke and Grace, freshly back from summer. How are you doing? Be sure to tell us part of your report. How was your summer?
Always, summer was great, but back in the swing of it. It's good to be back though, don't get me wrong. But that first week, we kind of just set like all the ground rules and stuff. And this year, at least the first time in my high school experience, we had grade wide assemblies to kind of set the ground rules. In the past, it was just your advisory teachers. I think the point of this was just to make sure everyone's like super crystal clear on everything. Cause I know last year with the phone policy, some people were a little bit more lenient than other people. So we just wanted to make sure everyone's on the same page. And especially now that we have a new attendance policy, that's a little bit more strict as well. And I think that was well received. And then looking a little bit more in the week on the fifth, it's a back to school event. Which I'm sure many of you have been to one of those before, but the parents get all the inside scoop and everything. And there's also going to be a message from the athletics department and the PTO. So the parents know about your, what's happening in the school and the outside school activities. And I will also be there because the fun part is the club and athletics tables will be on the table. Just kind of, kind of spark some new recruits and new members and try to get as many people as involved into hand community as possible. And it's kind of good for those, especially those freshmen who aren't quite sure where like a club is or they're not like sure of a team's policy, you kind of get straight to the point. And you also know like who's your student's going to be with most of the time. So it's pretty great, great opportunity. And then looking farther into September, but people are already talking about it, it's a school spirit day. And that's when all the seniors dress up in blue, the senior picnic and the pep rally. And there's a lot of excitement already, but I'm sure it's going to be an amazing day. And also later on that day is the first football game, which I'm sure is going to be super high, highly attended because of all that excitement from the school day and because it's the first football games, you can't miss it.
And then going on with the sports today, we had some of our first games of the season. So I'm a soccer player, so the girls soccer team beat New Fairfield by two. So we're starting the top five. And then girls volleyball was playing Guilford at six. I'm not sure of the results yet. And then boys soccer is playing Shelton at seven thirty. So hopefully we can have a successful day. And also a ton of freshmen are on the varsity teams, which is pretty nice to see. And then just, we had the freshman orientation the Monday before school started. And it was very well attended. We had a ton of upperclassmen willing to participate, almost too many, I would say. There were really small groups because of it, but it led to really personal connections. And I think the freshmen were leaving feeling a lot more confident about the upcoming school year. And also the parents really well attended that event too. Mr. Statutary said there was a really good question answer session to kind of ease the way into the school year. So that was really nice. And then just from a junior's perspective, it's definitely been the transition. Everybody talks about very notorious, but our teachers are helping us out. And I think we're kind of figuring out how to handle the AP classes that most students are taking.
Thank you. Any questions?
Are there, are there mentors for the freshman, it's our primary or upperclassman mentor support?
I don't think there's direct mentorship, like there's not set in stone mentorships. But like from being just on like a school, like two sports teams, I know that they're already built into place. Like I'm already talking to some of these freshmen, just because they know that I'm one of the captains. They know that I'm like a support system for them. So they're already coming up to us even if it is massive.
And I think with advisory, that's been super helpful, which is a group of students. We have it for all grade levels, but they meet, we met all week and last week in a certain room. And it would, we would go over procedures for the year, such as like fire drills or lockdowns. And they went over some of the new policies in advisory as well.
Did you stay with the same advisory all the way through?
Yes.
The same group of students and the same teacher?
Yeah, and the same room.
And the same.
Yeah. Yeah.
And my understanding with advisory, I mean, it started and then it evolved a bit. And I, I believe that there are some student-led activities in advisory now. What do you guys think of that?
I think, well, they really tried to push it at the beginning, but oh, I mean, if I'm being quite honest, it's kind of not really continued that path. Like they have said that you can be student-led activities, but at least what I've heard and what I've seen, it's like mostly the teachers kind of take over and then you kind of sometimes have some small group activities. But I don't think it's the fight going through the church, church activity that like was intended to be.
Do you get to ask, like, do you get to put in a set? We talked about it sometime in court, suggestion box or what you want, it's what you want to talk about.
Yeah, and especially at the end of school year, there was surveys sent out for every advisory classroom to complete individually. And it'll talk about critiques or things that were approved. So they try and edit it each year. But I think to Brooke's point, it's definitely dependent on the classroom. I know some classrooms are very engaged and it's very productive. Whereas other classrooms, the teacher isn't as engaged or the students aren't as participating like as they should be. So I think it's kind of imbalanced.
And who oversees that, like, you know?
I know there's like two main advisors who are teachers within the building. But really just like your advisor kind of overthrows that advisor group. And then the curriculum is back to main coordinators.
Right.
Con Spears is one you've heard of.
Well, I'm just saying, to your point, if there was a particular group that maybe wasn't working well, how could they, you know, maybe spread those kids out or change it around a little bit to maybe make it more productive? So.
Right.
So I mean, I'm hearing that maybe there's a little bit of inconsistency maybe in application. But as a general matter, do you feel like there are lessons that help with emotional intelligence development? And promote positive school climate that occurring in those sessions?
Yeah, definitely. And I feel like, I mean, I think some people just absorb it, like some groups just absorb it more than others. But the, what they're teaching us is very valuable.
Thank you. Questions? Thanks. That was awesome. If you guys have first week homework or anything, feel free to back up whenever you want.
All right.
Thank you guys.
Have a great year.
See you. See you next time.
Thank you.
Great. Moving on to the superintendent's report, Dr. Cook.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Klaskin. I'm excited tonight to introduce my intern for twenty-four, twenty-five AMI gas joints is from Guilford. She is the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. It's a pretty long title there. So I know she handles even more than that. And I wasn't sure we'd see her today because it's their first day of school over there. And I know she's busy getting out to school, so welcome you. Welcome. See you a lot this, uh, this school year. In terms of the school year, I, I shared with Central Office staff today when we, we had a very brief meeting. I would say that, you know, my four years, it was the smoothest opening. And we've had smooth openings before, but it was truly a very smooth opening. This school year, we had four student days last week and one today. So we're really off and running students. We're talking about, you know, tests and assessments happening this week at the high school. So it really is right back in the swing of things. As our students shared, there was a lot of community building that, that happened from the high school to the, to the preschool. So it was really, really great to see and have everybody back. Enrollment projections were pretty spot on. I look forward to sharing the October one official numbers with you. We still have some students registering, so still going through that. We're in a good place with, with that. I would say buses was a typical start. You know, we had some, some bus routes that had to be addressed as soon as they were posted. I was thrilled that we were able to address some before we even started this, this school year. So there were some grounds that we were able to address some concerns or changes needed to be made. You know, before the school year started, some that, you know, once we had them run for several days, realized that they were going to be outside the range of where we wanted them. And then there were some minor changes made, but it was really a smooth opening. Considering we had about seven new bus drivers in there. And as I reported last meeting, fully staffed in nutrition services, which we're, we're thrilled about. And, you know, we're being able to offer more food offerings at the high school in particular, because that was a problem last year with the, with the short staff. And so we're in a good place when it comes to, to that area. You know, as I said, you know, before too, really a good place with, with staffing. We do have a couple of long-term subs open. And I know we had some last minute, you know, resignations of staff that either received a promotion or a job closer home or another move, maybe from a one-year position here to a more permanent spot in another district. But we've been able to, to make that work and we stay in a good place as we, as we move on the school year. In terms of the CIP, the Facilities Committee met earlier tonight. They considered that CIP, no change from the previous addition that the, the board did see. I asked Peter Anderson to hang out through my report in case you have any questions. The board has seen that now for a second time. And so if you have any questions, please let me know and I'll, I'll let Peter after, after my report. If you have no further questions. But we did do a lot of work. We've spoken with the town and they, they're pleased in terms of where that is. Right now, still several steps to take on that. And, you know, they take the, the town's CIP, combine it with ours. But we do seem in a better place, you know, as we are standing today versus where we've been in previous years. You know, we've got some really nice CIP allotments in the last few years. We have some good projects as well that'll be good to, to get completed next year. And I know Emily has a, has a report as well when we get to facilities. In terms of accountability results, I, I don't want to share or, or take too much of the thunder from the principals. We'll be here next meeting, so on the seventeenth, we have all of our principals joining us. And Gail and I will share our, our accountability results. We were very pleased as we, you know, looked at results, we had, we had results for a little while. But then we're able to compare kind of where we, we placed in the, in the state. And we all know, we say this every time, it's kind of with a disclaimer, this is just a piece of our, our, our districts. And does not tell the story of each of our, our students, but I think is an important piece of, you know, their, you know, where our, our curriculum is aligned and our, our, our teachers. So, you know, our convocation, I, I thanked them profusely, as did Chairman Klaskin. You know, our, our principals at the, at the meetings that they had at the school level for the results. We didn't have the comparison data at that point, but principals were excited to share that with them. We're putting the final touches on the presentation that you'll get a week from Friday. So you'll have some time to review before that. But just kind of as a high level, you know, view SAT was number ten in the state in English Language Arts, number four in the dirt. And for math, we were number one in the dirt and number six in the state. So very strong in terms of SAT. We knew we had a little bit of increase, but maintained a very, very strong ranking in those areas. And then in terms of S-Back for ELA, when you look at all the grades combined, grades three through eight. So good look at our educational program in those, in those grade levels, number four in the, in the state and number two in the dirt for ELA. So very strong. And then math was number four in the state and number one in the dirt. So really, really solid results. You know, we continue to, to return. Thank our, our, our teachers and principals and most importantly, our students have really, you know, put importance and time in the test. I think the time on, on test and you'll see the chart we've showed you before in terms of participation rate. It's just incredible, you know, so where we, where we've come to. So we are, you know, a hundred percent in some places, but you know, a high nineties across the board in the participation rate. And my final piece was just to share with the board, I just got the flyer. So we're excited. We did this as a district last year, but we're going to do this more full scale as a, as a district. On September twenty-seventh, the entire district will participate in Ask for Hope, which is a fundraiser for the Tommy Fund for Child with Cancer. Students would bring in a donation of a dollar or more and wear a hat for the day. Stapper also do that. Christian Capizzi, a Paulson student, is the leader for this fundraiser. And he's, uh, really does a lot of the work himself. He, he came to that with me over the summer and, and shared his plan of how we wanted it to happen this year. And, and so just, just thrilled for the, the way he's thought about it. And benefit smile of cancer center at Yale. And then they really do great things for families of students, to support families of students in circle. Cancer treatment, a really tough time, but you know, our staff has been phenomenal with this. And Christians like that. So I wanted to thank him and thank the staff for participating.
Uh, just first, while we have Peter, does anyone have any questions on the CIP?
I do have one question. I noticed there in the Paulson, where are we in the auditorium?
That's a great question. Um, the auditorium is, we're, is being re, 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 actually redesigned and reprogrammed. So we're gonna, I, I'll have more of a report for you. I can actually see, I'm just trying to think about, we, we, without getting too vague or veiled, we, Ben and I redesigned the whole project somewhat and repurposed it to different areas to have it be a little bit more meaningful project. So we've already presented that to the building committee. They were very happy with the results of what we presented. We're going to be presenting that to Board of Select and when that goes forward. I can give you more details of what we're going to do, but it's a much better project. It's about what.
Well, we had put it on hold and then I saw that it wasn't.
It was on hold.
Up on side.
Yeah. No, it's, you know, it's.
We had talked about.
It's, it's correct. If I could jump in, um, so really what had happened was the, the HVAC on its own as designed was going to be a pretty expensive project because it involved ductwork. And that was building, it was not set up for that. So what they have done through the work with the building committee is they have redesigned the AC, AC project. But it allowed us to put a little bit more money into the auditorium project than originally was allotted for it when we were doing the full AC project. So I think they'll have, they'll have a great result. It involved, it's been presented, you know, I know we talked about it last, uh, Facilities Committee meeting. But, you know, it will accomplish the auditorium. Look forward to whether that we either start this coming summer, but more most likely the following summer because it does have some asbestos removal. And so we'll need to close the entire building. I'm starting to jump, but I just want to make sure that this has been moving forward the whole time. It's just kind of at a stellar pace than the new building. Yes, it's, it's a much better project. Yeah. And you'll, you'll get a, you'll, it'll more bang for the buck. It's, it's going to be, it'll be, it'll be a welcome project. Yeah.
Thank you.
I did have one other question I don't appear to report, but I know Diane brought up the idea of putting the Paulson and the Handcaving together in year twenty-seven, twenty-eight for possible savings. And I see it as is separate.
That's correct. Yeah. And part of that has to do with, in, in particular, it would be shutting down the availability of two schools for one summer and not having an option for like, we use the social program and stuff like that. So it's actually more effective for the, the ongoing educational process to do it two separate summers.
Thank you. Questions for Peter?
Thank you very much. You're welcome. And split. Thank you, Peter.
Or any other questions for Dr. Cook on any of the other areas? I guess we're going to be getting a more detailed report on accountability results.
Yes, certainly. Yes.
Okay, so I'll, I'll refrain on that, other than to say that wonderful to hear that, you know, we, our board has long taken the position that we recognize that test results are not the be all and end all that, that tell us how our students are doing. We're very proud, not only of the test scores, but a lot of the other indicators that our students are doing so well. You know, so any, we, we look forward to getting the more detailed report. Thank you. Any other questions for Greg? Thank you very much. Any board member comments?
I'll just remind folks, so for our board self-evaluation, I do have hard copy evaluation forms that you can fill out. And I will be emailing out to board members the version and like an electronic form where you could enter in your assessments. And then Gail and I are going to meet in the next couple of weeks to review, summarize, analyze, and bring it to the retreat for discussion, to our retreat for discussion. So I'll have all of that available.
Thank you so much. And the retreat again is October first.
Correct.
At five thirty.
We're going to start at five, five, sorry. So get there on time.
Any other board member comments? I'll, I'll just say it's exciting to hear that it was another successful opening of school this year. There's always a couple little outcomes with transportation, but it sounds like it was very minor. That's wonderful. Any audience response to information presented? Anyone online? I'll see it. No, okay. Uh, moving on to the consent agenda, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? Lee, do I have a second? Second, Stephen, like you, any discussion? Discussion, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close may. Any extensions? No? Okay, both should carry is nine, nothing. I also want to point out that we have both Christine and Diane are on Zoom. So you have a full nine-person contingent. All right, board and committee and the board committee and liaison updates, curriculum and student development, Stephen.
Yes, we met this evening. And the committee was comprised of Kathy Miller, Marion Connolly, myself, also attended by seven, and of course our superintendent and assistant superintendent. There's a great deal of material covered. So I asked the other committee members to support me in this because as I most certainly will miss important pieces contribute. There were two main items on the agenda that had to do with curriculum and had to do with the summer work. The first presentation was by Michelle Horn. And, you know, a significant shift was, you know, and I think a very smart move on the part of our assistant superintendent versus having curriculum coaches running the summer curriculum more. Michelle Horn agreed to take a leadership role in guiding all of these curriculum efforts, which are extensive. So in short, fifty-nine teachers came in over the summertime to work on a variety of curriculum areas. Seven content areas, English Language Arts, CTE, science, social studies, math, oral language, music. And ninety-one units were in revision. Now, this is a process depending on the area that takes place at different rates over the course of the year. But begins in, in focus on the summertime. So I'm not going to go into all the details of each of those curriculum areas. Those will just say that is again, very much a part of how we do business in Madison, that we invest in our teacher professional development and then trust them to take their expertise and their day-to-day understanding of students and bring it to an ongoing review of the curriculum. What really drives that, and I know, you know, we all know that, but it's, it's worth repeating. You know, it's a process of continuous improvement. So it really is, where are our students? Where are they against these curriculum areas? And how does that inform how we need to make adjustments? So for example, you know, the past year or two, we haven't been entirely happy with some of the science performance. And consequently, when the curriculum teams get together. And consequently, when the curriculum teams get together, part of their goal is to look at that and go, okay, one needs to be adjusted. So that was very much a part of the conversation in the presentation, which is, you know, the the process of. You know, never believing that we are there yet and looking at the data and looking at the students and then making adjustments. The next part of the presentation was from our superintendent and it was about. An important process, which is putting together uh a Madison reading program review team. Uh and their their charge was, again, review the district data. Related to the pillars of early literacy, and this was focused on K through three. Um as well as state achievement data and identify target areas for improvement. And second part of the charge is to examine the programs and evidence of impact of those identified areas. So as I'm looking at different things that we do in the district and reading, it's what's working? Where's there evidence that it's working and what might need adjustment? What is the importance in all of this, and anything I will say about this process is. It really started with a mission of focusing on the children of Madison. And and designing backwards from what to our, what does the data tell us? That our children need in terms of the programs. So toward that end, uh what that reading review team did was examine again the data. But they did it against a high standard, which is let's look at the data. Um with a benchmark of eighty eighty-five percent or better in terms of the five pillars of. Of of literacy. They were looking at best practice. They examined um some other warehouse areas of information. From pure rate and ed reports. And began a process of really examining um materials and examining. And considering three areas from the State Department of Ed to approved list. And the goal of making recommendations uh for Madison Public School next steps. I am not gonna doubt deeply into those next pieces, but I I will hit on the things I think are particularly important. And I ask Gail directly if I get this one. Well, at some point over the summer, uh and outside Connecticut investigator and. Okay. Presentation of Madison's uh State Department of Ed data. Was made public. And on the review of that, I mean, there were key areas that were part of our presentation to the state. And a significant number of those areas, um for example, I'll give one and there were several. Did the district create the curriculum? And the answer from the State Department of this report was no. Uh so there were several areas that. Are a mystery as to how they could come to that conclusion when they basically rejected our. You know, our application. The bottom line, uh and I really encourage board members to look at the materials that were presented. Uh that are in your packet. It's not huge, but it's, you know, it's presented clearly. And and conveys the information better than my cat in in the time that we're allotted. The bottom line is one of those areas that the state recommends, G O's, the committee. Agreed to pilot. You know, they looked at all of the other options, rejected some, I think for some very good reasons that would be indicated in the materials. Uh that you have in your packets. But basically, the you know, the conclusion of the committee is based on the data, based on what we're doing. Much of what we're doing is working the way we wanted to, one. And two, when we review any of the proposed alternatives, they fell short in their professional opinion. So what currently is being done and would not serve our our young people well. So uh I also I would alert you and anybody in the general public. That after tonight, uh there will be posted a reading website tab uh in our district's curriculum. That explains the science of reading and in in layman's terms and clearly outlines. The approach that um Madison is taking and what what areas. There was some closing conversation at the end of the committee meeting, which was, you know, not to listen. Seriously, what was being presented. The committee continues to support our investment in teachers in this process. Not just because we love our teachers and we love their professionalism, but their professional development. But because the data and the evidence is clear that what we're doing is working. And to do anything other than what we know is working, you know, is morally wrong. So, you know, it was really came out of the committee, you know, a statement that the committee. Supports and continues to support this work in this direction and encourages the board really to. You know, explicitly support that if people don't. I think that covers it. What I missed. Any questions that I may or may not be able to?
Uh just just by way of explanation, explanation quickly, um you know, the context of all this, of course. Is the state right to read legislation, um and it's mandate um that school districts adopt. Um one of several state-approved reading curriculum programs. Um we have resisted because we feel uh that the data supports the uh very clear notion. That we're doing a better job at um educating our students our way than any of the additional. Um uh reading programs that the state, you know, would probably prefer them be used. Um, you know, I had asked if maybe it would make sense to vote as a committee. Uh to recommend the adoption of the summer reading uh review committees uh work. And recommend it to the board for adoption. Um and the feeling was after discussion, that's it's probably premature for that. We may not need to do that, but we just felt, um and Stephen felt that the committee felt it was very important. For the board to be fully apprised of where we stand, what we're doing. Um and have an opportunity in the future to discuss it further, um if anyone has any questions. So that's pretty much where we left it for now. Um and I, you know, I just wanna let my support a thousand percent. Um to the work of that committee, to the work of the, you know, the C R C, the curriculum review committee that happened this summer. Um it's just amazing work that goes on here and um I'm proud to be part of for this. Thank you for your report, Stephen. All right, uh Facilities Committee, Emily.
Yes, the Facilities Committee met this evening. Um as you've heard, we started by reviewing the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six C I P. As you've heard, there have not been any updates from the last time we reviewed it. Uh Peter did look into the paviness Gail and asked about. Um but stated that's better to spread it out and keep it as it is. Um the first selectwoman and the finance director are responsive. It seems like this will be completely positively received. And you'll see it's a fairly modest, fairly even, um evenly spread out across the years. So we'll vote on that later. Um Peter also gave us an update on summer work. So Ben, the new construction manager, gives Peter very comprehensive monthly reports. On all that's going on around the district. Um so we get a lot of content there about Tulsa H BAC, planning and design. Fieldwork, the baseball field, brown site work for the playground, the conversion, ground three K areas. The rooftop units, brown site, lots going on. Um a ton of information. And moving forward based on Diane's um suggestion, I'll just say anymore, which was helpful, is we'll sort of break up the report by building. Cause there was a lot of content so we can uh ask any questions building by building. But seems that Peter's really happy to have that information and Ben's doing great and there's been a lot going on over the summer. We did talk about having a field trip again to Brown to see the summer work. Peter reported that he's never, I think he said he's never witnessed such an extensive and amazing transformation renovation to the building. Uh he was absolutely thrilled with the work second Dino Brothers did, a super job, so we'll keep it posted on on that. But he was seemed absolutely thrilled and everyone's happy with that transformation. It's really feel like a, you know, pre-k elementary building. We then had an initial discussion looking ahead to Jeffrey and Ryerson buildings. This is something that, as you all know, the board has to make the decision when those buildings are no longer used. Uh when we give the keys back to the town. So the plan that we all we always discussed was raising the Ryerson building. Um there had been a school that had expressed some interest in looking at the building, but nothing came of that, as you all are familiar. Ryerson is sort of a, I can't imagine any other uses for that super building. Um and then in terms of Jeffrey, Peter did some research about how much it would cost us to mothball the building. Basically, if we wanted to hang on to it and keep it if we ever maybe needed it again. Um that would cost about fifty thousand dollars a year, sort of check in on it, plumbing situations, things like that. So we discussed a little bit, you know, what we might see the use of that building be. There were some, you know, good comments from committee members that a big part of this reorganization has been reducing our footprint. And it seems sort of strange to keep a building open when we've been very clear that we're really focusing on these four buildings. We don't have anything off the top of mind that we could use it for. The town hasn't expressed anything yet. Um the only thing we talked about was, you know, if and whenever we might want to expand, like a preschool thing, but that really isn't feasible. Especially with what Craig said about enrollment numbers aren't much different to someone who has been projected. So um and it would be expensive to, you know, to keep Jeffrey over with uptown help, but I don't think any of us want that to happen. So this is the beginning of a discussion. At some point, we will need to. They'll take action on those two buildings. We don't do that right the second. We can think about it and discuss it, you know, at future meetings. So to be continued, um we did not have any public comment and we adjourned at seven fifteen. Any questions or comments? Any members wanna add?
Thank you very much. Finance Committee, Gailen.
Uh we have not met and our next meeting is scheduled for two weeks from now, five thirty, I'm seven.
Thank you. Personnel Committee, Marley.
Personnel Committee has not met.
Uh and Policy Committee, uh Diane had to jump off the meeting. Uh she was on Zoom earlier. But she had asked uh Gailen to uh present current committee report. Uh thank you with with hope, so I'm sure. So um uh Policy Committee has not met. We have one action item tonight. Um this concerns the second reading. Of um uh policy five, one ten point four student discipline. This is formerly a suspension, expulsion, exclusion from school, school activities. The proposed revisions are intended to more closely comply with federal legislative statutes and guidance. Uh to improve consistency uh and maximize the positive. What is the term to maximize positive student behavior before engagement in disciplinary system? Uh it incorporates AI and chat G P T and possible violations. And it downgrades uh uh with fractions regarding cannabis to the fear of alcohol. Uh goes through the definition scope, actions and procedures for um for discipline. It's a it's a it's a it's a long pause. Uh but the Policy Committee has not met either, so there's no report other than that. Correct. So any questions? No? Thank you very much. All right, Learning, it's on, Mary Anne.
We haven't met. I haven't received anything, but I would assume it'll be next Thursday.
Thank you. All right, so moving into our action items, uh action item ten. We discussed during the facilities report uh that we there would be a motion to approve the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. Capital Improvement Plan, and I need a motion to do so.
So much.
Emily, do I get a second?
Second.
Um discussion.
I just wanna thank Peter and his team for helping through this process. Like I said, it's very thoughtful and. One of our easier C I P processes in years past, I think. I mean, it's just, we've done a lot of work in the past and we're doing a lot of work through the reorganization. So we appreciate all that they've done.
I had, um I I mentioned during the committee meeting earlier this evening, but I think it bears mentioning again that um. You know, we're we're coming in much lower than usual for these the these two upcoming, this year and next year. Um on our C I P plan, and I think that that is um. Delivering on representations made during the period when we were looking to do the uh schools renewal project. Um we anticipated and predicted that it would help um lower and smoothen out our C I P. At least um you know, for uh you know, within the short range. And it appears that, you know, with all the work that's getting done on the schools with the project money, it's enabled us to do that. So the C I P comes in um well within the Madison Investment Plan goals, which will also help. Um with the Board of Select and and Board of Finance's job. Um as as they uh move forward with the Madison Investment Plan. Any other comments, questions?
Yes, I have one question to go back to also. Uh so it's not on the standard case, but. And I know that he's got, sounds great, what he's gonna do. So how we, how is that gonna be content?
Sure, so there when the school renewal plan was passed, there was a twenty one million dollar, twenty three million dollar project passed for Paulson. So that funding is still available for for Paulson's school. And um the original scope of the project, the the voters voted on improvements to Paulson's. And we presented it as HVAC in uh auditorium, so we would accomplish those two goals, air conditioning in um in auditorium. And then potentially do other improvements. So that's what they're looking at. Yes, yeah, so that it's it's actually um in 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 my opinion, a better use of the funds that were approved by voters. And removes it.
Right.
Um removes one of our uh our oldest that would be left, right? So um for capital improvement projects. So we, that's how we've gone from a capital improvement plan of uh fifteen million over five years to nine, you know, over the five years. Yeah, and I apologize again for jumping in so quickly about the auditorium, but it's such a, it's such a um. It's 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 such a um important thing that and that we communicate to the public. Yes, because as we know, we don't have um, you know, an updated auditorium at town for instance. This will bring us that at the middle school level and will pull that the high school students leave the vice that as well, yeah.
Any other questions? Any other discussion points? Okay, we have a motion on the table, all in favor, I. All of those today. Any extensions? Motion carries uh eight, nothing. Thank you. Thank you. All right, action item eleven, discuss and take possible action on the proposed cave resolution. As you guys will remember, um, as part of our advocacy through Connecticut Association of Boards of Education. We had an opportunity to present a proposal for a, a resolution to be adopted, um, by that organization. Um, as one of its policy points for the coming year, um, and it did, uh, and we had a majority of our board come back to me and, and. Um. And noted that, um, you approved of the draft. Um, so I attended the meeting, um, where that was discussed by Cave. And, um, they made one minor change where they felt it strengthened. The heart of the resolution, the actual resolution part, you know, there's the, you know, the introductory part, the resolution itself. And then they added a rationale section, and they just took the last couple of sentences that. Had been in the meat of the resolution and put that down in the rationale section. So it was, it kind of tightened up and strengthened. Um. And it's in your packet, I'm sure you saw it. Um, so we just want to, um, discuss that, vote on it, and if it's approved, then I want to notify. Okay, tomorrow that, um, it was in fact approved as amended by, by our board. So any questions, discussion, uh, well, I guess I should. Do I have a motion, uh, to discuss and take possible action on the proposed cave resolution? So, um. Uh, Stephen and I will kill. Uh, morning, a second, thank you. Uh, okay, discussion, questions?
I, I could totally miss this, are there other boards taking, making similar, uh, resolutions?
We're the, we're the only board that took a position on the R T R and not mandating, okay, future wholesale curriculum programs. Um, but it was very well received by Cave, and they've been very supportive of our advocacy efforts as well, as, as you guys know from prior. Reports, there were a couple other districts that, uh, the boards submitted a couple of resolutions. Um, but those, um, either were changed a lot or not approved.
What is the? Distribution of this, how was it communicated after it's formulated?
Yeah, so, um. The resolution committee reviews and approves the final versions of, of, of resolutions. And then they, the resolution committee at the Thursday meeting. Before the cave conference, so it was the fourteenth of, uh, September, yeah, November, fourteenth of November. Um. Will send a delegate to the delegates assembly, and at the delegates assembly. The resolutions are presented to the delegates assembly, to the delegates assembled, and they vote on it. And if it's adopted, then it becomes an official policy position or statement, um, resolution. Um, of the organization, and then they use those to help formulate their, um. Legislative agenda. Good question. And so there's actual action on it, it's interesting, it's an interesting process. Any other questions or discussion? See none, I'll call a question, all in favor, I. I, all opposed, nay. Any extensions, motion carries eight, nothing, thank you. Uh, action item twelve, I need a motion to approve policy fifty-one, ten point four student discipline as described. Um, by the end of the. There he is, do I get a second? Great, thank you. Uh, any discussion of that?
I'll just say, I, I really appreciate the additions and the language, I just, the language feels very student. Centered, as of course everything we do should be, but it seems, um. Positive and consistent. I just, I really appreciate, you know, in particular, like where appropriate, the district implements strategies that teach, encourage and reinforce positive student behavior. That do not require engagement with the discipline system, and also considering individual circumstances, it just seems very. Human, student friendly, and there are other points as well in the policy, but I appreciate those updates.
And I also, um, I, I also credit the, um. Members helping us with our, our policy development, um, for. Adding stuff to support. The administration going forward and getting its arms around A I. And how generative A I may be used and how it shouldn't be used. And I think that will head off some problems in the past, um, as kids get a hold of, uh, chat G P T and. And start sending funny pictures of people's head with someone else's body and all that sort of nightmarish stuff that, that could happen, so this gives us teeth. That we can enforce right from today. So we pass this. So any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, I, I, opposed, nay, any extensions, motion carries eight, nothing, thank you. Uh, action item thirteen, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the August twentieth, twenty twenty-four Board of Education. Have a second? Great, um, any discussion? Changes, no, seeing none, all in favor, I.
I.
Opposed, nay, any extensions, motion carries eight, nothing, thank you. Um, oh, you know what, there was one thing that I noticed on the policy. Sorry that I'm saying this after the fact.
Definitely brought it up, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Three sixty something. Yeah, the paragraph. That's between line three fifty-six and three sixty-six. Yeah. I think it's missing a, uh. Since we have, though, and the little bit might as well fix it. No, I can't find it, and it's not an operative word anyway. If I do find it, I'll let you, so now. Then you may be fixing, yeah, but it's just, it's syntactically incorrect, it's missing a thought, I think, so, um.
That's actually a copy of a state law this year.
Is it, but, um, yeah, I, I don't mean to. Sort of, you got it.
Can't say that the legislature. There, I was just.
Yeah, I've, I've seen bigger mistakes than state, state law for sure. Um, all right, uh, any future agenda items?
I'd like to just bring up, uh, the cell phone, what are we gonna do about the cell phone? I'll see here, how we're gonna proceed.
I think to start and hold up Craig's answer as well, but my understanding is that the administration is going to be. You know, getting together to look into that, um, and then, um. You know, make recommendations as, as any development.
Yes, yeah, so I was just looking for a date too, um. Catherine, our T J, Salteri, myself, uh, are meeting with the, uh, group in town, just as, as, as one step to kind of, um. Again, share, because there, there's, uh, a lot that they're talking about that has, um. Stuff to do with schools that doesn't happen during the hours of seven to, you know, three thirty, doesn't happen during school time, so they're talking about that, so we want to. Certainly provide support, support to that, and also share, um, what's going on, you heard our students talking today, um. About, uh, the expectations being set at the high school, uh, early on in terms of, uh, cell phone use. And then I think as, as S said, we're, we're looking at, um, still digesting what came out of the state. And looking to bring that to discussions at the, um, at the policy.
Uh, but I would say, it, you know, it's clear to me that all of the board members really heard the folks from N Y U. Madison Youth Unplugged, who spoke at the last meeting, and, you know, it's, it's a considerable concern and there are, um, issues. On both sides that, you know, it's, it's, it's worthy of, you know, a thoughtful approach. We are, we have had a thoughtful approach, but it's worthy of rethinking and seeing whether there needs to be any change there or not. Yeah. Yeah, so. Okay, thank you, good question. Um, I need a motion to adjourn. Green. Have a second?
A second.
I believe. All right. Um, any discussion, all in favor, I, opposed, nay, the extensions, we are down. Done, thank you, adjourned.